July 16th meeting of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Orson, not here. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Here.
Will you all join me in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance bed led by Pastor McGibben of New Freedom Worship Center?
Thank you again for this honor and privilege to pray tonight. Thank you, Lord, for this important meeting tonight and for our supervisors and county administrators and all the employees in the county. Bless them for their sacrifice and their service and bless them with wisdom and understanding as they bless us with sound decisions and good governance. Thank you for our law enforcement officers who are here tonight and for those who protect us year-round throughout Gloucester County. Bless them and keep them safe. Lord, let peace and mutual respect and civility prevail in this hallowed place tonight and in every county office and school building. Bless our school board and our principals and teachers and especially our dear children. Protect them from physical harm, Lord, as well as protect their minds from harmful and sinister anti-American philosophies. Above all, we pray, oh, Lord, that you will bring peace to our nation and heal our land as you promised if we turn from our wicked ways and seek your face. I close with the prayer of St. Francis of Assisi. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. Oh, divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive. It is in pardoning that we are pardoned. And it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of the minutes from March 4th, March 5th, March 13th, and March 19th.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is adoption of the agenda. I'd like to add an item E, which is just going over the RFP for the fire stations.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next item is the consent agenda approval.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item matters presented by the board.
Ms. Steele, um, the NPA has, has met one time. We're getting ready to set up our next meeting. Can you please make sure that we have sent our dues in for the NPA?
Mr. Bizani?
I have one question. Ms. Steele, do we usually would get utility reports from our utilities director? Are we going to, you know, start doing those reports for the board supervisors benefit?
Are you talking about the monthly reports? I will double check on that. I think what's happened is there've been some interim and special reports instead, but hopefully we can get back on track with not having to have special reports about breakages and things like that.
Okay. So we'll, we'll go back to the monthly utilities reports? Thank you.
Dr. Orson?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Just to highlight, I met with Mr. Lemonite and Mr. Bizani regarding some of the flooding issues down at Guinea and Almond Grove Road. He walked through some potential fixes that are temporary, but I think that there is the possibility that we can help them. I sent him a follow-up email asking him to provide us with his idea of what he can do, what VDOT can do, because he did mention a bunch of things like dig out the ditches, put a culvert in one of theirs by Big Island Road and some other things. I have yet to hear from him. I told him it really is necessary to do this now before we get our first hurricane because of the fact that the flooding could be a really big issue with a lot of people there. The other was, there was a right-of-way that was once owned by the state, by VDOT. They gave it up and Mr. Wilmot did the research. Unfortunately, that right-of-way now is owned by the adjoining property owners and there is a berm that needs to be removed if we're going to allow the water. And the gentleman that lives there, Mr. Voit, he said he was going to try to talk to the owners to see if they'd be willing to get rid of a portion of the berm because that berm is preventing the water from leaving. That's the biggest problem. The water comes in, it doesn't leave. And it comes in from the marsh and just stays there. So I'm hoping that we could see some relief for the people that live down there in Guinea. And the big issue, of course, is Almond Grove. If people coming to Moton Center come in the wrong direction, they're not going to see it. So we're not going to be able to prevent the water from coming in. We just want to get it out and get it out fast. So those are some temporary solutions. I'm hoping I'll hear from him soon. I said, just give me a timeline and the things that you had recommended we could get done before that first hurricane hits this year, which I'm hoping we won't, but they've, you know, they've upped the numbers, the number of named storms and hurricanes. So let's just hope, keep our fingers crossed that we don't get any of those. Anyway, that's what's going on with them.
Mr. Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the issues that we've been dealing with over the past few years is the woods, crossroads intersection. It's a very dangerous intersection. Many of our residents have been, been injured and sadly killed at this intersection. There is a public hearing Thursday night at the RCC campus. It begins at 5:00 PM. And so I would encourage all residents who are interested in what may happen at the intersection to attend and provide your input. Thank you.
Mr. Crisco?
To Mr. Gibson's point, Ms. Cronin, can we advertise that two or more board members may be present?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bizani?
Do we know why, do we know why they have the meeting in RCC as opposed to, let's say, something more local, closer to here? Is that VDOT's decision?
My understanding is because it's in the northern end of the county, they wanted venue in the northern end and with the capacity to hold enough residents.
Anybody else have one more thing?
What about you, Mr. Chair? You have anything?
I'm good. Ms. Steele?
First, to Dr. Orson's comments, that was very timely for conversation that Mr. Baines and I had yesterday, saying that we wanted to get the lead and get his exact timeline and the specific goals. So as a contact was being made and we were definitely following through with him, I appreciate all that you've been doing, providing additional information to him.
Yeah, those ditches, what we said about the ditches, they've got to come out now before it, we get, it gets wet. They could dig it out, get rid of the stuff. And that culvert that really needs to be placed there before you get to Big Island Road is really important because that water sits there and there are school buses that go through that and that's saltwater.
Right.
And you know what saltwater does, too, breaks. So I'm hoping that we can get something from him, writing that some of those things can get done pretty soon.
The only other comment I had for the board, I owe you all an update memo on a situation we were dealing with in the county, with county and state violation. And I had thought I would get it out to you before the end of the workday and I did not, so I'll, I'll work on that tomorrow. But we were waiting for additional information from the state, which I believe came out this afternoon.
You broke it?
Is that it? All right, thank you. No scheduled presentations for this evening, so we'll move to citizen comment period. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward, state your magisterial district, and please limit your time to three minutes.
Catherine Carter, Abingdon District. You have a contract for the people. It's called the Constitution. Article 1, Section 14 says that we are guaranteed uniform government. That government is described in Article 1, Section 5. It is three separate and distinct departments of government and periodic voting. That makes a republic. If you have two separate and distinct departments, what are you do, three, excuse me, what are you doing as a legislative body, having a supervisor sitting on the legislative body and act, and as, as an agent in the administrative department? That makes your body null and void. That is not three separate and distinct departments of government. That is Chevron deference operating under stare of deceases. And there's a tombstone on that that was done July the 1st, 2024, about two weeks ago. The EPA does not exist. It was never legislated by Congress. Several of you make, you know, you have a business that has to do with the Green New Deal, has to do with the EPA. And then these departments that you're about to pass an ordinance to cancel, the protective ordinance we had to keep our rural community like it is, where entrepreneurs thrive, where they're not run out of business and run over like, like a roller coaster. We have, you're going to stack up apartments, 12 apartments on one acre of land, 200 acres, 2,400. Multiply that times eight, you will double the population of Gloucester and have congestion beyond imagination. And then you're going to measure every drop of water, every little bit of electricity they use. Smart cities, people, and you need to understand that. That's the UN master plan. You'll, you'll own nothing and be happy.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
I'm Diane Jones from the Ware District. I have a couple of things here that I would like you to clarify. Resolution supporting four proposed smart scale projects. What are they? And it's by the Director of Planning, Zoning, and Environmental Programs. I definitely want to know what those smart programs are. And, I mean, before you vote and approve them, resolution approving partis, participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims and directing exec, execution of documents necessary for participation. Please explain that before you vote on it and let us know what on earth that is. And I had my smart meter removed recently. It killed a bush of mine, fried it right down to the ground. And so when they put the opt-out meter in, I had someone come over with a radiation detector and it is in a safe, in a safe area of radiation. So I hope everyone that's watching in the county would please get your, get rid of your smart meters. They're dangerous. Catherine needs to come here every now and again to tell you about the Constitution because somehow it just went away here. So we need to get back to a constitutional republic and get rid of this democracy, what the Democrats call our democracy. It might be their democracy, but a democracy is two wolves and a sheep deciding on what's for dinner.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Hi, I see some familiar faces from the other night at the planning meeting. Hope this didn't go that long. That was a long night. I'm Lisa Kid Goodman. I own Goodman's Antiques and Estate Jewelry. I have two commercial locations here in the county, one at the courthouse, one at the point. Just have some logistical questions and I tried to get them answered through, going through the phone and, and how are decisions made, say a residential piece of property on 17 corridor? Because I used to work with Jay Scudder here years ago when he was here with the Planning Commission and, pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. And I just, I'm, I just need to have some questions answered as to how, in fact, does a residential parcel get declared business on 17 corridor? What are the parameters on 17 corridor that are still implemented as far as green space, the trees, the setbacks, that sort of thing? Because I know they change from year to year or with the, the Board of Supervisors when it's replaced. And then also, I just wanted to, I just wanted to ask, there are so many parcels for sale up and down 17. Were they all originally commercial zoned or are they deemed commercial by review once they are put on the market via the owner or the real estate company? Does that come to your hands for decision-making? I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what is the future of 17 corridor? What are we looking at as a aesthetic visual in the next five to six years? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Susan Austin from the York District. And I attended the Planning Commission meeting the other night, which was followed by an overwhelming crowd. They had to remove it to the TC Walker place. And I just wanted to say that Catherine Carter has already mentioned the, the, the numbers of houses that could be built if you change the zoning. And it's really hard to think that this community would be willing to change the way that we are now to, to put in all those houses and who knows, who's going to buy them. But the old ways of pulling over the wool over our eyes no longer work because of this Chevron defer, deference. And we, we now have to follow the law as it was made. So I'm hoping that this board will take the interests of all of the people that showed up overwhelmingly against these ordinance changes and take that to heart. We wonder if this board is getting immigrant dollars like COVID dollars to build these things and enrich the developers. We understand that the UN is all for these smart cities and increased density of, of our cities, but I don't believe that is in anybody's interest here. Our Declaration of Independence from Britain stated, "There must be consent of the governed. It is our right, our duty, to throw off such government which acts against our will." A strong, overwhelming attendance at these meetings is needed to throw off this yoke. And word comes from Gloucesters, word from this Planning Commission is that these, these new ordinance is coming down from our own planning department in the county. So I'm wondering who's feeding all this to them? Could it be the UN? We're looking to follow the UN's smart city development? I don't know. Only you can tell us that. That's what we're asking. Nobody seems to get any answers. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Would anyone else like to come forward and turn citizen comment? Okay, we'll close citizen comment. There are no public hearings. Let's start with the, we'll start with the regular agenda, resolution supporting four proposed smart scale projects. Ms. Rizzio?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I was back here in May to talk about those four proposed smart scale projects so we could submit our pre-acts. Our final applications are due August 1st and they do need a resolution of support from the boards. I'm just going to briefly go over what the applications are as a reminder and public information. So the four projects are basically along Route 17, two new projects proposed and two kind of recycled ones that have been applied for before but were not awarded. The first one is a widening of Route 17 from four to six lanes. Currently, we're funded from Farmwood Road, which is where the old Pizza Hut is, or was, all the way up to Tide Mill. So this would take it from Tide Mill to Guinea Road. I do have plans in my office, and this is just an excerpt from them, but I do have plans in my office every, if anybody is interested in looking at them. There is limited right-of-way impacts, but there is some right-of-way needed for utilities and BMPs. The second project is a new project. This is intersection of Belroy and Route 17. What they are proposing there is to extend the left and right turn lanes along Route 17 and to re-stripe the east side of, the east side of 17 Belroy for a dedicated left turn lane and right-through lane. And then on the west side of the road where Belroy enters, to add a short dedicated right turn lane to have a dedicated left and a dedicated through. And no right-of-way is needed for these improvements. A project that we applied for last year was a first time, was a shared-use path in our courthouse area to link up sidewalks and proposed projects that are in the area. It, last round, it extended all the way down to Short Lane, so we shortened it up a lot. So we're linking along Main Street and coming down the west side of 17, connecting to the sidewalk that was recently installed in front of Chipotle's with their development. Chipotle's. And then the last project has been submitted several times to smart scale. Last round, we came really close to being funded. We're hoping that it will bump up now. So this is a dedicated right turn lane on Providence Road to go southbound on Route 17. We are coordinating with the area developer. There's a Caralot Pet Supply, it's called Caralot Pet Supply Developer coming in on the west side. We're working with them so that hopefully if this does get funded, everything will work together. We do have it also in our secondary six-year plan, but according to VDOT, the project is getting more and more expensive and dealing with limited right-of-way, it may not be able to be done in our secondary six-year. So hopefully enough projects got funded in the last round of smart scale that this one will jump up and be funded. So you have a resolution of support in your agenda package?
Any questions from Ms. Rizzio?
How much money is available in the smart scale tranche of money that they set out for these projects to be bid on?
Like overall in the whole statewide program? Hmm. I don't know off the top of my head I can let you know. It's in the millions.
That's fine, because I read something today where New Kent has put in for improvements to their interstate exchange, which will probably take a large portion of this money if it, if it wins. My other concern is, is the proposal of number three with the, if you want to go back to it, the two crossovers here where you have the traffic merging off of 17, which I don't know why they just don't make that a right turn, but it's because they want to consider the limited access. I, I can't, I can't get on board with the two, with the cross, the half of Main Street to come up and then cross again, where you have these folks thinking this is an interstate highway, that they're going from the 45 zone to, it stays 45, but they're, they're coming through there way faster than that. That's a recipe for disaster and I, I can't support going after this until it's worked out better because this is going to be disastrous.
Mr. Bizani?
Just to remind me again, these smart scale projects seem like a conundrum to me, but do we get input as to what such smart scale, smart scale project? Do they come to us and say, hey, we have a variety of projects we'd like to pursue and here, local Board of Supervisors, we'd like you to tell us which ones you want us to prioritize? Do they do that for us or they just say, here's what we're going to do and you just, just got to swallow the, swallow it and take it?
So these are locality-supported projects. These are ones that staff comes up with, working with our Transportation Plan and Advisory Committee in VDOT to identify important projects in the county. Every year we come to you with our transportation update and lay out the projects we're thinking about submitting to gauge your interest and support of those. So this is the second meeting.
Yeah. Dr. Orson?
You know, for the public and the people that had to ask some questions, in terms of our being competitive, do we compete with projects for the Saluda District or is it for all districts? I mean, is there, is there now allocation for Saluda District, you know, the York District or whatever, or is it just state?
We compete within the Fredericksburg District.
So we're within the Fredericksburg District?
Yes.
So the Fredericksburg District gets a chunk of money and as Mr. Crisco alluded to, that is going to be a tough one if New Kent gets their money because they're in the Fredericksburg District, right?
Yes, and they do have, they've separated funding buckets. There's high priority project, which interstates would be more regional significant, so they have money set aside for those type projects and then money set aside for smaller projects, intersections.
Again, my, my issue with, with this is all they've done is taken taxpayer money, bundled it up and said, we're going to do it this way and we're going to award this because it used to be something called, something completely different. And we just had an incident here in the county right here near Fiddler's Green. We want a smart scale. We put in a crosswalk to get the Fiddler's Green. At the same time, we were getting money to put in a right turn lane. But because that money wasn't going to be used till late, they put in the crosswalk and then had to go tear half of it up to put in the right turn lane. So our friends at VDOT, while they're trying to spend money more adequately, fail to realize that they are spending taxpayers' money, no matter what they call it. They can call it smart scale, HCP, whatever funding mechanism they want to use, it's still taxpayer money. There's no tooth fairy out there giving these people the millions of dollars outside of the money we pay in taxes when you fill your car up, when you charge your car, when you, when you pay your income tax and everything else, your sales tax, everything. I can support three of the four projects. I can't support the double crossing of Main Street and it just, it's going to be a disaster.
Ms. Bizani?
So who decides the equity on these funds? Who decides who gets what? And if we, we apply, as you said, the planning, your planning department, our planning department has gone to VDOT and said, we, we'd like you to consider these projects, but is there a small cudgel of, you know, VDOT people in Richmond that say, you know, we'll decide how this money is equitably spent, as Mr. Crisco had indicated? You know, where's our tax money going and is it equitable? Not in terms of the equity you hear, it's just equitable distribution of taxpayer money for such projects like this.
So, so everybody, all the applications are put into a smart scale portal, they call it. And there's a formula that how it scores each project, each project is scored on the same basis. And the top-scoring projects are the ones that get funded.
Who scores?
It's VDOT's smart scale portal. There's the, the state Vtrans and, and remind me of the name, the... Right, the Commonwealth Transportation Board makes the decision on what gets funded, but it's pretty much based on how this project score in the smart scale portal.
So the CTP decides, they have a large say in where this money is going and, and they, they would direct this smart scale organization to disperse the money?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I just had a couple of follow-up questions. I just had a couple of follow-up questions. You use the acronym BMP regarding the first project. What is, remind me what that is?
Best managed stormwater management.
A big mud puddle, big mud puddle. That's what it really is. It's a big mud puddle, holes where no water goes in.
Got it, okay. And then, looking at the project that's on the screen, could you just educate us on what these lines mean, what the dotted lines mean?
Sure.
And also, could you explain how this pedestrian crossing would work? Because I do think there are some safety concerns here.
Sure. So the solid yellow lines are existing sidewalks. So this is the existing sidewalk in front of Chipotle, right here, and all these existing sidewalks in the Foxville development. This first crossing is a pedestrian hybrid beacon, so it's basically a stoplight, but just for pedestrians. It would be linked with the other stoplights along Route 17, so it, when you push the button, it would line you up in the traffic pattern for crossing, and then you cross with, it's green for pedestrians.
And where does that crossover, where does that cross? What business is across the street?
Aldies.
That's Aldies, okay.
So you're telling me they're proposing to put a stoplight?
It's not a stoplight. It's called a pedestrian hybrid beacon. It's a arm that goes across the road with, it stops the traffic coming up. So it's not a vehicular stoplight, it's a...
So what empirical data do they have to indicate they really need this thing? Do they sit there and watch pedestrians try to cross over right there where Aldies?
Yeah, we've had a pedestrian killed in that area. There's, you know, you have, we have the hotels on the west side and a lot of restaurants and stuff on the east.
So they're willing to put this kind of stop or some kind of barrier where a person pushes the button, but at Woods Crossroads, they're going to put an R-cut, which is going to create a bigger mess? I don't understand, I don't understand the logic behind all this. I don't understand how they decide who gets what, which crossroads. We've had, how many people killed there? Two, three, four? And they, the simple solution is to put a stoplight there, but they want to put an R-cut? You're going to see how many accidents is going to happen from that, as a result of that. And they don't, I'm not blaming you. I'm blaming VDOT on their, in their infinite wisdom in deciding, smart scale, I don't know, that's so smart, to not put a stoplight on Woods, you know, Woods Crossroads. So I don't know, you say they had empirical data that shows people are jumping the aisle and trying to get across the street. They had someone observing people trying to get into Aldies by walking to it?
This is the same R-cut that I drove past at our last, the last time we had VDOT in, or two times ago when we had VDOT in. This is going to be in about the same area of a R-cut right here. It's not a true R-cut, but it's a restricted U-turn there, where there was a collision with a rollover in a 45 mile an hour speed limit zone. I understand it's a safety need. I just don't think it's the best use of our smart-scale application.
I agree.
And I will gladly support the other three, but I will not support this one.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Steele.
I think Ms. Rizzio may need to expand on this because I don't, but I do know that the R-cuts are part of, the two R-cuts are there, there is an adjustment that's going to be made to the location to them, to make them safer. So the pedestrian walk is supposed to be fit in with where the R-cut is being adjusted. We have, there's a high pedestrian fatality rate that is occurring across the state, just like there's a much higher fatality rate that's occurring with car accidents because of speed. We have a lot of pedestrians who are out there getting killed. Gloucester unfortunately has had a number of accidents. In fact, if you go by there, you'll still see the flowers that are out there by the side of the road. We have had, so that's all tracked by the Sheriff's Department and calls and go to VDOT, so you can look at all the severe accident areas all over. So this has been identified as a high priority area. We have a number of people who are in the hotel, motel, and they don't want to get in their car. And they just want to zoom over to get something from Burger King or whatever, and so that's the reason for this area versus other areas. The, right around, that's what, you know, that's the background line. The one thing that I would like to get back to, that Mr. Gibson asked, which was the same thing I was going to ask, I know that then, there's been some concerns with VDOT about how the crossover is going to go on Main Street itself. And so if I'm looking at this correctly, and I think this is what Mr. Crisco was indicating too, a person's going to walk down the middle of, like, on a raised median proportion of this?
Correct.
All right, is there any possibility that there, that the project could move forward, and there may be, again, examination of how that crossing could actually take place to get from the new sidewalk that's going to go in all the way down Main Street, so people could be walking from the library or whatever? And they need to get to the other side, and we don't want to see them hurt. What kind of flexibility or whatever is there on this part of it?
So this alignment was drafted this way when VDOT did their pipeline study, where they looked at the courthouse area and identified traffic improvements needs. That's where this came from. And this was generally the recommendation for the safest way to get pedestrians from the other side of Main Street, where we have our shared-use path funded to the south side of Main Street, which is why we put it in there. We have had people with similar concerns. We recently discussed, instead of having people, so this uses basically along Sutton Road. This dash line is a proposed shared-use path that goes along Sutton Road and then would cross Main Street up here, past the Sutton Road entrance. People did look at crossing, going, staying along Route 17, crossing the merge lane, coming up to the light, crossing them at the light, and then crossing this merge lane. But instead of one crossing, you have three crossings, and you have a pretty high-speed crossing when people that merge. I come to work every day, I mean, you just go, you know, there's no pausing, and to think that a pedestrian's going to be in that way. So that is why this was determined to be the safer. People have questioned, you know, you're having them cross halfway, walk down the median, and then cross the rest of the way. And the reason for that, the way it's drafted that way in this, is because you're trying to limit that crossing. There's turn lanes on both sides, so we're trying to stay where it's only two lanes crossing. There would be no pedestrian hybrid beacon at this crossing. It would be what's called a rapid flashing beacon, which is basically a pedestrian warning crossing sign with flashing lights that go around when the pedestrian pushes a button, warning traffic that there's a pedestrian in the area.
So just like the one over there on Jamestown Road where the, actually, not Jamestown Road, it was Richmond Road, where the chair of the Williamsburg Foundation managed to see the blinking yellow lights and still managed to run over a student at a 25 mile an hour speed limit zone earlier this year. Same yellow blinking light that comes on when they're ready to cross, and if the glare's right or the sunlight's right, you might not see it, might not see the person. Again, there's got to be a better way, and until VDOT makes this a true right-turn, right-turn, instead of all these merges that were put in when this was, they considered that to be a restricted-use highway, like they still consider it to be, this is going to be detrimental to our citizens in this county.
Isn't it true, this was determined to be like a bypass? You know, you can quickly get off 17 and bypass 17, go through Main Street and get back on?
The bypass is if you stay straight. The bypass is if you stay straight.
The bypass is the part you stay straight.
That's why there's no businesses along there.
We have situations like this all over Virginia where you have cut-ins like this. Are they going to put, you know, these managed crosswalk devices across all of those? I mean, this, why pick this one? It just seems, a reasonable person would say, I'm not going to cross over this, I'm just going to get in my car and get a Chipotle by car. Why would you cross over by foot?
You see a lot of it now.
I was going to say, Mr. Chair, I just had that happen this week, and I reported, I was coming down 17, and a person was crossing a little bit further down, and they pretended to go, and then they stopped, and they pretended to go again, and then literally all the traffic on Route 17 stopped for the gentleman to cross. I think there's more people crossing the road than we think. I also think, this looks scary to me, too, and that's where I would, it doesn't mean that it may not be the best solution, I guess, you know, if it goes forward and if it gets funded, but I still would ask, is there any, like, the next step? Is this a definite design? Or if funding happened, would there be another look at, is this the best way?
That's a hard question to answer. I know it would be looked at, is that the best way? And if there was concerns about, and there's maybe another way, you could, but you'd have to go through the process of modifying the application if it was significantly different.
Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so I understand, you mentioned earlier that this would be a bar as if it was a railroad crossing that would come down, or is it strictly the flashing lights with crosswalk painted on the pavement?
So on the Main Street crossing, it's, I probably should have added pictures to the presentation. On the Main Street crossing, it's a, you know, the yellow pedestrian crossing signs, warning pedestrian crossing ahead. This has flashing lights that would go around it.
Okay.
Okay?
Is there any physical barrier that would prevent cars from...
A stop bar, a stop bar and a crosswalk, but there's no physical barrier that would come down to stop the vehicles.
Okay.
What's a stop bar? What's a stop?
A line, a line on the pavement. So philosophically, I agree, it's a safety issue. There is a risk. But for the grace of God, I would have hit someone who darted out from Damon's wearing all black about a month ago, and I saw him, and it was about 9:00 PM, but people go across there, and it is a safety issue, and people get hit, but I don't think this is the right solution. I think there needs to be more planning and examination and evaluation of it. So I would agree with Mr. Crisco. I'm willing to support the other three projects, but I don't think this is the right solution.
I would tend to agree, and I'm wondering if we could be looking at a crosswalk. I know there are crosswalks that go up and over, allow people to access another side, probably much more expensive, but possibly more safe. And if we are seeing more people, I'm just saying that, you know, we all travel those paths down that road, and people coming from work or going to work, whether it's at night or during the daytime. You see some drivers that do not adhere to any kind of safety procedures, and my concern would be, we may see more fatalities if people think they can cross. So I would be of a similar venture to not support this project, but the others.
Same here.
Same here. Mr. Chair, I totally agree with that, but it is an issue. We don't want to say, we're not saying it's not an issue, especially when that grass is tall, and I've seen people look like they're crawling up out of the ditch, you know, and almost hit one. So it really, it's a danger. So, but I just, it needs to be something different.
We need a solution. I just think we need a different solution for this, for this problem here.
Mr. McCusie.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. There are a lot of things about that that disturb me, so it's already been addressed. But if that's something that we're going to think about doing, I would not be myself if I didn't say, it has to be accessible in some kind of way. Because if we have out-of-town guests, as Ms. Steele said, staying at the hotel, and they want to go down to the Burger King without getting in the car, if I take this wheelchair down in the ditch, there's a good chance I'm not coming back out. Not by myself, anyway. I mean, I'm just being honest. And so if we're going, if they're going to put that kind of money into making that pathway, then we need to do it right, and this is not the right way.
All right, so would anyone like to make?
I will make the motion to go forward with...
One, two, and four?
One, two, and four on the, on page of the resolution, on Mr. Chair.
Page forty-eight.
On the resolution on page forty-eight to proceed with one, two, and four.
I'll say it. Ms. Steele.
I pushed my mouse instead of... I'm just pushing a button somewhere. Sorry.
Ask one more question before we, so, I know we asked this before, just a minute ago, but what, if we did one, two, and four, what's the cost of all that? What's the approximate cost?
So the widening of Route 17, approximate fifty-three million. The Belroy intersection improvement, five million, and the Providence Road, five million.
So we can't, I swear, that's $10 million. We can't just put $1 million stoplight at Woods Crossroads?
It's not on this program, and VDOT doesn't care what we say.
That's just wasting, I'm just taking my wallet out and just throwing the money in the air.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we were referencing the correct project, because on the resolution, it looks like this shared-use project that we're having some issues with is number two.
So, so we would...
I was looking at the, I was going...
One, three, and four.
One, three.
I'll make the...
Okay, Mr. Crisco, you want to mention?
I'll amend the motion to be one, three, and four. I was going on the list in the proposal, not the list in the, sorry.
Sorry.
Good catch. I should expect nothing less from our esteemed colleague lawyer on that.
I will second your...
How you doing?
That's the problem. Ms. Steele, now.
Dr. Or.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Crisco.
Yes.
Mr. Bizani.
No.
Mr. Nikosia.
Yes.
And Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we will look for other options to improve pedestrian safety in our courthouse area.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims and directing execution of the documents necessary for participation. Mr. Wilmar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Office of the Attorney General of Virginia has advised that a new multi-state opioid settlement with a large retail pharmacy chain, Kroger, has been reached. There was a citizen who is in attendance tonight who wanted information, so that's why I'm reading this. Although it is online, the entire agenda packet, which commences at page sixty of your agenda packet, is in there and is hopefully self-explanatory. It also lists me as the contact person if you need any information. I've received no phone calls on this, so I assume probably erroneously that there are no questions, but I haven't received any. The state of Virginia has elected to participate in this settlement, and Gloucester County must opt-in to participate in this settlement. I have drafted a resolution for the county to participate in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Kroger and its related corporate entities, and directing me to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the county's participation in the settlement. The ordinance basically tracks the state ordinance. As you may recall, the county has previously participated in opioid settlement, settlements with McKinson, Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBergen, and opioid manufacturers Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Teva or Tiva Pharmaceuticals, and Allergan, and retail pharmacy chains CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. Some or many have thought that the manufacturers of the opioids and the distributors of the opioids are culpable, are financially responsible for the admittedly devastating impacts that these drugs have had. I don't know. The FDA approved them, and the doctors prescribed them, and the people use them. But we're only dealing now with the distributors and the manufacturers. So what you have now in front of you is a resolution which authorizes Gloucester County's participation in the proposed settlement against Kroger, which is one of the distributors. In order to participate, you have to opt-in, and what that means is, if you don't opt-in, then the county doesn't get any of that money from the Kroger settlement. If you do opt-in, then the county gets a share of that multi-billion-dollar settlement, and I don't know the amount. But county would be, it would be incumbent upon the county to utilize those funds to address the opioid problem, and that those funds can be used in a multitude of ways, whether it's education, or treatment, counseling. So you may use those funds. But you have chosen to participate in previous settlements. You're not required to participate in this one, but that's what it's all about. Any questions? I'd be happy to...
Mr. Bizani. So where was this class-action lawsuit litigated? California?
I don't know whether there was a class-action lawsuit.
Or where was it litigated? It's just you would have an opioid settlement. Settlement came from where? Some court?
I don't know.
That's okay. I mean, I didn't know if you...
I don't know.
So all of the opioid litigation has been handled through the northeastern federal district of Ohio. That's just where they ultimately decided to center them.
So our federal government decides to shirk their duties, and the FBI approved all of these drugs to be distributed, yet it's Kroger's fault that they should be in trouble for doing that, is right? It's the FDA's fault. It's like the EPA. The EPA puts in all these unelected officials to decide what we're going to do to our environment, yet, you know, when something goes wrong, you know, it's not my fault, you know, I did the legislation, but...
And just to follow up on what, Mr. Wilmar?
And how does the money, let's say Gloucester County gets a little piece of the pie, and they wet their beak a little bit on this money. How's that distributed? Do we keep the money or distribute it to people who have been affected by opioid addiction?
We, we, the county would receive the funds, and then we would have to utilize those funds for opioid problem adjustment mechanisms, such as counseling or education or...
We have the resource person at the high school now with the joint, with community services, not communities, yes, community service.
Behavioral health now, yeah, CSB.
So, it's something that we've been working on, and we've seen the last few months. We had the presentation in May.
And we, and we accepted the other, or opted into the other settlements a year and a half or so ago, maybe two years ago now, to bring the money back to our locality, because there are people in our locality being affected by this.
So, I'm gonna say one thing. This is analogous to McDonald's selling french fries, and somebody chokes on a french fry, but they're gonna sue the farmer for making the potato. That's, that's what's gonna happen. That's what this is.
This is more, correct me if I'm wrong, this is more an issue with them filling multiple prescriptions for the same person from multiple doctors.
That's a piece of it, yes.
But there's no network for prescriptions. I mean, one doctor, Doctor A prescribes, Doctor B prescribes...
But there's a network at Kroger that they would have, that they have to document.
I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're still practicing that, though, right?
It's a record-keeping issue that all this is about. Dr. Orth?
So, I would assume that if we opt in, and we do get a piece of the pie, would there be restrictions on the money? Or would this be like what we had with the previous money that we had? You were given, you gave us up options of what we could or could not do, or you gave us options that you thought would best utilize the money, which we agreed was the high school individual. Would this follow a similar path?
Yeah, the initial settlement with the Janson and Jansen, it basically incorporated a sixteen-page document that listed out the potential uses for the funds. And each of the subsequent settlements have pretty, pretty directly aligned with those recommendations. So, as Mr. Wilmot indicated, it includes abatement, prevention, actual treatment, therapeutic services. So, it's pretty wide. It's a sixteen-page document, the original appendix. But, you know, you have some leeway, but there are stipulations.
Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bizani, I hear your concerns, and I know there are concerns about litigation and who is at fault. But to me, the settlement is water under the bridge. It's happened, and this very large corporation has made a risk-benefit analysis that they would rather settle this case than put it before perhaps a jury in Appalachia where... And they would...
Fair enough.
A jury would, would render a verdict far in excess of this settlement. So, they've made that decision. The money is on the table, and with the, what we are facing with addiction in our community, and with the new counselor at the high school, apparently has been very successful. I think that if the money is there, I would agree with opting in and using that money to address addiction in our community.
Is that a motion, Mr. Gibson?
So moved.
Resolution on page sixty-one. Ms. Steele.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
No.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth? Motion carries.
And I just wanted to add very briefly, from that settlement, we're probably gonna get an estimated additional one hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand to use for this program.
No vote was just against the government, that's all.
Thank you, John.
Next item on the agenda is board appointments. We have local emergency planning committee. Roger West would like to be reappointed.
So moved.
Second.
And we have James Riley from the Ware District would like to be reappointed. I do not have anyone. Second, yeah. Do you have anybody, Mr. Bizani?
Do we have to find anybody? I believe there was a note from Ms. Cronin about some changes we made. Will this, with only reporting Mr. Riley right now, Steele keep us at the five? Do we need to continue to look for, I mean, if we get them, great, but at five, they can still have, still have their meetings, because the form will change.
I think, you know, having changed the bylaws, and given that I'm on that utilities committee, you know, this way, we can look for people who have a very distinct interest in utilities. So, we recently brought in someone who's actually in the Abington District, representing Abington, but this person has had a good background, is providing expert advice. So, I think it gives us a leeway to add additional people. But I think right now, we are at five, right? With Mr. Riley, so we're okay. But if there are other individuals that come forth in the volunteer bank, we can add them if they have the background necessary to make substantial contributions to the utility subcommittee.
So, again, let's say we have someone in the Ware District. It's, that their entire career was in utilities and facilities management. But we have a, we have a rule that says in the York District that we can't assign that person because he's not in New York District.
It's open, it's open now.
It is now open now?
Yes, it doesn't make any difference what district you're in. You can apply regardless of where you are in the county. We want the most qualified people...
Perfect.
To be on the utilities that can make substantial contributions to help us navigate all the things that are happening, that we're trying to improve utilities.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item is the up-meeting, the budget calendar, or it's not budget calendar. It's a meeting calendar. Ms. Steele, I'll take this real quick. It's just for the August sixth meeting, because of, we're gonna have the people for the rezoning property that was presented at the last planning commission, we're gonna have it at TC Walker. That's the only change right now.
And will we see all the additional suggestions that are being made?
They are...
So that, so that people can read the agenda before they get there to understand the things that are being proposed?
What do you, well, hold, wait a second. This is just about the rezoning of that one property?
Right, yeah. No, that's it, that's what I mean.
But it is being, they're resubmitting it.
Right.
So...
I talked with the lady this morning, who told me what they were trying to do, and that, you know, they wanted to be on the August sixth agenda. The reason why she contacted me, it's in my district, okay? And so, I just want to make sure that the people who were there at the planning commission know what is being proposed, so that they see all the stuff on the agenda.
It will be on the agenda, it will be presented, and I have asked Planning, once the new presentation comes out, to present it, to give us advance notice. Ms. Cronin.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to let the board and the citizens know. The public hearing notice should come out in the paper this Thursday, and at that time, we will post the application. And it should be the modified application that they're submitting online. So, that will be available online. It will also be available physically in the county administration office if anyone wants to come in and look at it, so that they can see the changes that were made as a result of the planning commission meeting and the comments made by the citizens.
But the...
Thank you.
But the proposed presentation will be presented to us earlier.
The presentation will be posted, we can try to post that as soon as we get that as well, but definitely the application, because that's referenced in the public hearing notice.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Absolutely.
The planning commission had a public hearing, as you're painfully aware, on the original application, and they voted to recommend disapproval of that original application. The Board of Supervisors may make changes to any approval that they choose after your public hearing. There's no statute that allows for modification between the planning commission's public hearing and the Board of Supervisors' public hearing. So, I've worked in, or the planning department has worked in conjunction with me and vice versa in crafting a notice of public hearing for the August sixth meeting, which indicates that you're gonna have a public hearing on the original application, because that's the one that was acted on. But that the applicant has requested, suggested, proffered, a modified application, which would just rezone from SC one to B one, right? B one, a small portion of the property, which would enable the sighting of the gas station. And that you will then be allowed to act on that. But the technicalities, the legalities, led me to conclude that because the planning commission has held a hearing on the original application, and has acted on the original application, and that your only opportunity to change it is after the public hearing, is not to advertise the modified application, it's to advertise for public hearing the original application expressing the applicant's intent to ask for a modification, which lessens it. Does that make sense? All right, thanks.
So...
A motion or just a consensus?
We need a motion.
I'll make the motion to change the meeting location for our August sixth meeting from the Colonial Courthouse to TC Walker Education Center.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the RFP that was presented that Ms. Steele talked to us about a few months ago, about future needs of the fire departments within the county. RFP has been proofed, read, ready to go. There was some concern about changing... We're adding it. That's what we're going over now. We, the discussion to slightly modify the RFP and leave parts of it out, the part being the locating, future location of Station One. I'd like a general consensus on, do we want to present the RFP as originally presented or with being modified? I think that if we're gonna do a true RFP to look at the future needs of the county for fire, safety, rescue, we need to look at the whole county and look at the future plans and everything else with housing and everything else that are planned, and use it, present the RFP as originally written, with the corrections for grammatical errors. Mr. Bizani.
So, what is the approximate cost of the RFP if it's let?
I hesitate to say the amount that we think, because I don't want someone to bid higher, and we don't have an advertised amount. But I'd be happy to answer if the board wants me to, or I could talk with you afterwards.
No, we'll talk afterwards. I'm in agreement with Mr. Hudson. If you're gonna issue an RFP, it's gonna have to be for the entire county, and then we decide what happens after that. If we don't, and we modify the RFP to exclude certain areas, then let's not do an RFP. There's no need. There's, you know, they've already decided where they want the fire department to go, or firehouse to go, then no need for an RFP. But if we want to know where the county wants to grow, and, you know, take into consideration areas where the county will grow, and they will need a fire department and firehouse located near those congested areas, then we should issue the RFP. But if we're gonna modify the RFP, then we shouldn't do it.
Yes, I agree with the comments, Chairman Hudson, Mr. Bizani. I believe that we should proceed with the original RFP.
Chair, I agree. I follow board members, especially for future needs.
I think it's the future needs of all, just not deciding at this point.
Right.
Mr. Crisco?
I'm going to go in the opposite direction. Because the only approved building that is going on in the county at the moment is the reserves, AKA the Barron's, and however the many iterations it has been. And several members of this board agreed to remove the proffer of a fire department being built for that subdivision. The fire department, Station One in Gloucester County, has been answering calls from the Main Street location probably longer than anybody in this room has been alive. I think our partners know best as to what the future is gonna hold imminently for their location. I also feel that I will back the fire department. And honestly, at this point in time, I'm not sure an RFP is needed, being that the only active site is an area in which they said they had the capacity to answer all those calls for, in the locations that they currently have. And with that project gonna take probably a decade to build, I think we're in a decent shape right now.
Mr. Nikosia?
You know, last night, I go, you guys are gonna have to give me a couple minutes. Because last night, I spent a lot of time at the ocean, thinking about this particular thing. And I can see both sides of the, of the coin. I can see why you want to leave it in there, and I know why they want it out. And so, I didn't go back and forth on it, but I thought long and hard about it. And I'm going to agree with Mr. Crisco that the fire department, whether everybody agrees with where they want to be or the location they want to be in, that's where they feel like, that's, that's where they feel like best suits the job that they do. And so, for that, for that reason, for the reason of that's where they feel like that's where they best suit it, I really feel like if they want it removed, we should respect it.
Thank you, Mr. Crisco. So, what is the consensus? I mean, I've got... Well, I think I said what I felt like, because it was bringing it up. I think for the future needs, the RFP is just not about deciding a Station One. It is the future needs of all fire and rescue for the county. It's gonna include Abington stations and everything else. It's to include equipment, it's to include whatever else, so we can get a handle and an idea for helping them through the RFP on what's needed. So, it's not just citing building Station One, it's for the whole county.
This RFP was born out of the fact that a few people do not want a fire station on Main Street. This RFP was born out of that fact. That firehouse and that fire station has been answering calls longer than anybody in this room has lived in this county. At least lived in this county, probably before anybody in this room was born. They are our partners. They provide a valuable service to all of the constituents that they serve, whether it's Gloucester Volunteer Fire or Abington Volunteer Fire and Rescue. And they have managed to do this all of these years and not have an RFP on the future needs, because they monitor it, they have picked the locations for when they've had to do their expansions. To me, this is us trying to control what the fire department wants to do, and I didn't like it from the beginning, and I'm sorry it's taken this long. We should have already had this discussion. At the end of the day, we have to work with our partners. They are our partners, and this is not the way that we should be handling this.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Smith?
We're not saying that the fire department can't build a fire department where they want it. We're like, with future needs, this is for the entire county. And I do have a question. Then, a couple of our board members, Mr. Crisco, Mr. Hudson, Ms. Steele, and I think it was Mr. Wilmot involved, went, met with the fire department, and that's where this, that's where this RFP was birthed and brought back to the board? Am I right?
You're right.
Okay. So, what, what, what happened? Because when it was brought back to the board, that Mr. Crisco, Mr. Hudson, everybody was in favor of it. They brought it back to us, explained it to us, and what we did, we said, okay, let's, let's do it.
Right. And I still agree that, but here's, here's the reasoning that I have. The fire department, Gloucester Volunteer Fire, has now asked that the, their RFP, that this RFP does not determine their future location. I have to accept their modification, because the fire department is our partner. If that firehouse was at the... is our partner. If that firehouse was at the ability where it did not need to be moved, we would not even be looking at doing this RFP for our future needs. If that firehouse was up to code and up to standard, this RFP would not be coming before this board. And this RFP was born out of the fact that a few people don't want a firehouse on Main
Ms. Steele.
I hesitate to say this because I don't, obviously it's a board's decision, but I also don't want to be misinterpreted. It seems to happen a lot lately with comments you make. But one of the things that in discussions with the fire department, there were discussions about how many calls that are being made of different types. So, I went to dispatch and I haven't even, this information is, you know, hot off the press and I haven't shared it with the fire department yet. It was my intent to do so after this meeting. But just as an example, Riverbend Apartments, and I'm not saying anything disparaging at all about Riverbend Apartments. What I'm talking about is the quantity of people that live in an area. There are more people because there's 218 units. That is more than any subdivision we have in the county. They had 344 calls in 2023 to Riverbend Apartments. We are talking five times that number, not next year, but within 10 years if the reserves builds out. There are, it's public knowledge for those who follow these kind of things that a submittal has gone in for a preliminary site plan review. So, it has not come forward, but it would involve hundreds of additional homes. The board may vote no. But we know, as we've discussed in the past, there's a pressure on Gloucester that you're going to be having to face decision after decision of whether to build, allow more building or not. There's another that's already zoned, that was already zoned, doesn't have to come to you, that's getting ready to build, and that's going to be another 38 homes. The 117 homes that were built at Main Street Landing, there, in my opinion, if the Main Street location is the best location considering the zoning that is already brand approved for the 1042, the zoning and the occurrence that already happened of Main Street Landing and the other things that are happening, if it shows that, then that's great. It's just further evidence that that is the place to go. But I would say that the people who were running calls for the last years were not necessarily thinking that, good gosh, we just had this apartment complex open up a few years ago and now it's the so far above anybody else on the number of calls, 344 calls in one year. So, what is it going to be like? I don't know. What is it going to be like when the reserves is fully built out? And so, my expectation is there may be some call for it as it stands or even a modification for something to stay on Main Street. But as far as the ability for Gloucester Fire and Rescue with that facility to handle thousands of more people, personally, I don't think so. And I think we need that study for that reason. Also, just like we did the utilities plan, we need to know what your expenses and what things are going to be coming for the next 10 years. You're talking 10 to 12 million of borrowing for that one facility. You're going to have other facilities that have to be built or have to be added to, to be able to handle this growth. It might be expanding the Bethel and the one at Ark, I'm sorry, or it might be expanding Abington. There's going to be equipment that has to be replaced. I would like for the board to know what is coming because I don't think we can handle this kind of a wave of growth with those kinds of expenses without having somebody review it. And so, that's not saying it shouldn't be there or it won't be there, but I'm just looking at the total population changes that are going to be happening. Thank you.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes, I understand that there is possibly a need for this. All I am saying is, having this study done was not a consideration until after Gloucester County Fire Department property down the road from their current location. And we had people come in here telling us that they didn't want it there. So, we weren't planning to do this until this happened. That's my heartburn with the situation. And when they've asked for a change to what was going out, they're our partners. I feel we need to accept their wishes or not put out an RFP at this time.
Dr. Ward.
Mr. Crisco, I think you're correct in the statements that you've made. And I agree that, you know, this is something that has happened. However, I think it links this proposal, the RFP, links to something that we've been talking about, that Ms. Steele presented to us recently about the developable land in Gloucester County. You had maps that were, you know, fairly detailed as to what could be developed property. And of course, this board will be faced with decisions on whether we go forward with some of these projects or deny it. We get calls regularly from people who say we don't want Gloucester to grow, period, okay? But we can't stop growth, just as when zoning came in in the 80s, you can't stop growth. The zoning can help. But I think the board will be faced with some very tough decisions regarding projects of large numbers of housing units. And that will be our fate, our future. But I think personally, even though I agree that this was born out of that issue, this might be a timely, might be timely to do something like that to understand where the county is going, to link the growth of the county and where, and whether we have the proper facilities. You know, we're not sure where the growth will be, but you know the numbers are up all the time. We're going, what, 150, 200 people a year? And it's not stopping. You know, we can't stop people from coming. I think we can control some of that based on proposals that come to us that might require our decision to approve or not. You know, that will be the tough choice. But, you know, there are houses being built. There are people moving in. And you're right, you know, they're coming here and then we can't stop it. But we can have some control over it.
Mr. Gibson and then Ms. Steele.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I hear your points, Mr. Crisco, and I too share your utmost respect for the men and women of Volunteer Fire and Rescue. They work long hours under difficult conditions with many, many, many calls. And they have responded to calls involving my family and handled them very professionally. I'm very grateful for what they have done for my family. And so, I want to do what's best for them. I will say that I think the purpose of this, the thing that causes me to support a countywide look is for the best use of taxpayer dollars. It's because we are stewards of those dollars and we are going to be making decisions that involve tens of millions of dollars. And ultimately, this study may recommend that we use this land and we build on Main Street, but it may also recommend that due to the growth of the reserves and Riverbend, that we're going to need another station on 17. And we, I'm not a firefighting professional by any means, and I need some experts and some study to gather the information so that we can all make wise choices about the use of this money. And so, I'm in no way suggesting that by supporting this that I oppose the station on Main Street. I just believe we as a board need more information so that we can make good choices about the use of our residents' money.
Ms. Steele.
I also wanted to point out that this board voted and endorsed having the station be on Main Street as part of the bond referendum. So, the RFP did not come up until after the referendum failed. If the referendum had passed, it would have happened. We would be under working with it right now. So, after it failed in this discussion that we had with Fire and Rescue, there's no way, we can all have our theories or feelings about it, but there's no way to absolutely say it failed because of this or it failed because of that. And I know that there were comments that were made and this was part of the discussion, that whether they were older comments from previous years or whether they were new comments because it was a referendum about the location and also at some of the meetings about the need for a study. And while the Fire and Rescue folks did discuss and have conversations, there was not a formal study that we could show. So, I just want to point out and give sort of kudos and credit to the board that not only do you support Fire and Rescue, but had the referendum passed, it'd be going right now.
And thank you for making my point. Because if the referendum would have passed, we would not be putting out this RFP, whether it had anything to do with location or not. We would not be having this discussion here tonight.
Mr. Brazani.
Just on my professional, a little history lesson at Newport News Shipbuilding. We were building, and I was one of the cost estimators for the program. We were bidding for Los Angeles class submarines against Electric Boat, who was our competitor. We were fierce, bloodthirsty competitors against that submarine program. And there was one admiral who decided to change the RFP for the construction of those submarines so that the only responsible bidder would have been Electric Boat, that Newport News could not compete at all because we couldn't fulfill the contract specs. And we were consistently cheaper than the shipyard in Connecticut. I feel that if we change the RFP to, you know, not bias, I don't like to use the word bias, but you know, if you want to learn and see how growth will affect the location of a new fire department, then I think the RFP is necessary. It's necessary. And it could be that when we get the results of the RFP, and I say, Main Street is probably the ideal spot, you know? It may be. But I agree with Mr. Gibson. We're dealing with $10 million, 10 to 12 million of taxpayers' money, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to spend that money wisely. And I have the greatest respect for our fire department and I've always supported them. But we do need to take a fair look at where our needs are going to be in the future.
All right. Taking myself out of this seat for a second. I'm putting myself in the seat of 10 years as Vice President of Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue. Those men up in that room did their due diligence. We did our due diligence. We looked at properties. We ran analysis on calls. We didn't just wake up one day and say, oh, let's go buy the Booker property. So, speaking strictly for myself, we, the firehouse was on the referendum and it failed. Then, you know, we're going to have the study. Nobody in the firehouse, nobody in the firehouse is saying, don't have, nobody that I'm talking to, that I've talked to said, this study might show. This study might show that we need a firehouse in White Marsh. It might show that we need a firehouse in Glens. But this is where we, these are the phone calls that I have gotten in the last 24 hours. The reason we did this is because this is where we believe we can best serve the citizens of Gloucester County. So, my personal feelings aside, they bought the land. We did the due diligence. I don't, I can't tell you how many hours I spent up at Station One. We did the due diligence. We looked all over. We did all of that, what Ms. Steele was talking about, call analysis. And yes, with all due respect, you get a lot of calls at Riverbend, but we spent a whole lot of time at a nursing home. We spent, hold on, we spent a whole lot of time at Gloucester House. We spent a whole lot of time at Fiddler's Crossing, okay? So, yes, I agree. When Riverbend came in, that increased the calls. That increased the calls there. But I'm not saying, let's don't have a study. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that's where they feel like, that's where they feel like they want to build. And they feel like, again, I'm just speaking frank, we were in, they were in support of it. They as a group, were in support of it when it was on the referendum. Now, some of the membership feels like it failed on the referendum, so now we're not going to get it where we need to get it. And they're going to choose where it goes. Ladies and gentlemen, that's what I've heard all day today.
Ms. Steele.
I'm so concerned because this is not to be an us or them scenario. This isn't all us supporting them. And there's nobody here that doesn't support the Fire and Rescue Department and want them to have the things that they need. The fact that the referendum failed means that the citizens versus the massive group of citizens voted no. Again, whether it's that location or whether it was spending money that they didn't want to have tax increase, whatever the reasons people voted. But for you all to go and borrow 10 to 12 million, I think if a study, two things I want to say about study, but if the study states that it should go on Main Street, it should squelch and quiet any person who voted no for the referendum because of that reason. It would further prove the point that it should. If we had not, if the referendum had passed and we were moving on with things, I would still be looking at some sort of a comprehensive review of what is needed. We have two different departments and whether the lines change, and they work very well together, so that's not an issue. But the capital fund requests come back to the board and having an idea of what's needed for the next 10 years when we're looking at issues with, you know, having enough staffing and things like that. So, I think the RFP with or without, if you all had said, take it out, I would still encourage you to do the referendum because I think, not the referendum, I'm sorry, the RFP, because I think the RFP is needed either way. But I think that by having it included, it puts to bed things. And I also, I think the count that was done and the look at what was done years ago with the due diligence is different than what it is now. I mean, we're experiencing a growth, the pandemic, all the different things that have changed who we are, where we are. And so, the email that I want to send to the board, like I have the counts for the other places. It's 91 for Gloucester House versus the 344. I know the numbers because we got them. So, I think this is going to be very helpful for both Fire and Rescue squads to be looking at all these things. And I also, besides looking at the counts of change, is also that we're expecting over 10,000 more cars on Route 17. I don't want them, but that's what the expectation is, over 10,000 more cars on Route 17. That, I don't know, and maybe all that was a due diligence, but I feel like we started about a few years ago in looking at a real growth where we weren't before. So, maybe that was considered, I don't, I don't really know. But back to the bottom line is, I don't want to see this divide where Fire and Rescue feels like they do not have support from the county administrator because they absolutely do and from the board because they absolutely do. So, I don't know what the solution is and how we all want to handle that, but we need to be together on this.
Dr. Ward.
Thanks, Ms. Steele. You know, this board and every board that has come before us has fully supported the Fire and Rescue Squad. Mr. Nikozzi, I know you spent 10 years of your life, I spent close to 14 years of my life on Abington and was president, vice president, ran the fund drive, did everything I could and came before this board when I was president, you know, doing the same thing that other presidents have done. And there's never been ever a negative vote in support of our Volunteer Fire and Rescue Squad. You know, things have changed dramatically and I think this board will support, you know, the position of the fire department to have that building there. I think, again, while the details of this RFP and its genesis came from, unfortunately, that referendum, I think there's a good thing that came out of it. And I think we'll learn a lot about this. And if it's done right and we get the right company, it could mean a lot in terms of how we see this county and its needs regardless of, you know, the fact that we are going to see a station, number one, on Main Street. It's going to happen. And I think we're going to support it the best we can. But this will dovetail that and help us in our future needs. And like I said, you know, there hasn't been any board ever, even during some of the controversial times, have not supported either the Abington or the Gloucester Fire and Rescue Squad. You know, we know what's important. We know the volunteers are important. You know, things have changed a little bit in terms of... have changed a little bit in terms of the need for paid, but we have a great volunteer squad, and it's always been like that from day one, when volunteer Fire and Rescue squads were formed back in the 50s and 60s.
Mr. Crisco.
Were the Fire Departments made aware that we were going to have this discussion this evening? Because I didn't know we were going to have this discussion until I sat down in this chair tonight and we changed the agenda.
Well, the only-
So were the Fire Departments made aware that we were having this discussion?
I didn't, I didn't call, and I'd called each and every one of you and have talked to each of y'all. And I wanted it to be open and let the Fire Department hear what we were talking about. There, it wasn't brought out. The only issue we were set, the only issue we're looking at is, are two issues. A, do you want to do the, um, RFP? And B, do you want to do the RFP? And if you do, do you want to do the RFP, include Section 3 in it, which is the sighting of Station One?
There are partners, they should have been here to discuss it with us.
But we can hold this off and have it on the 6th. That's not a problem. I mean, I, personally, I've told everybody from the get-go, I like the fire station on Main Street. But if we're going to sit there and look at the future of this county and spend 10 to 15 million dollars on a new station, I think it needs to be in the absolute right spot, because it's not just a, a fire station for the next 10 years, it's a fire station for the next 50 years. And with the great job that the volunteers do, I hope that it continues to be a volunteer station for the next 50 years. But with Gloucester's growth and everything else, I see it being paid, or at least a hybrid pay, more hybrid, more paid than volunteer in the near future. So that's why I think it's vital that we determine the right spot for it. But I would love to see it continue to stay on, on Main Street. And with the property that's been purchased, the plans that have done, that's going to have a large impact on the sighting of the place, of the location anyway. But if they come back and say, look, based on the, on the growth, projected growth, everything else, in spite of having that land, it needs to be at XYZ location, then I think that's what we need to look at. If they come back and say, hey, you know, it's a toss-up between XYZ and on Main Street, guess what, it's going to be on Main Street. But if it's a significant difference between the lo, two locations after a study is done, that's the thing. I mean, what we could have done, go ahead, Mr. Crisco.
So, if it changes, then there's more outlay for purchasing additional property that they've already purchased. You're, you're, you're going to expand the cost if you change locations. So it's not going to be a 10 to 15 million dollar project, it's going to be a 15 to 18 million dollar project, and it has to be, we need to have our partners here to have this discussion.
That's fine. But if we're going to sit there and be realistic on the situation, if it is, we do have to buy another piece of property that somebody says is the best location for it, then we have a piece of property that they can then sell. So you can't sit there, I mean, it might not be a complete wash, but it might be close. I don't know what the, I don't know what that's valued at. All, we're sitting there doing hypotheticals on what the value of the property is, or what we can get for it, what we would sell it for, anything else. All I'm saying is, is for the next, if we're looking at something for the next 50 years, we need to plan and make sure it's the best location.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
How did we get here? We got here because of the referendum. The referendum failed. A referendum that didn't just include the firehouse, it was a number of projects. The firehouse, I think, failed. Wasn't that the citizens in the county didn't want? It was because the citizens didn't want us to borrow the money for it because they thought we had the money for it. So that's how we ended up getting here in the first place, them being told that if the referendum failed, we would still be able to build a firehouse. That, that didn't happen. So that's how we got here. And we, and we need to kind of like remember that during this discussion.
All right. So March 6th, you'll notify both Fire Departments? August 6th, what did I say, March 6th?
August 6th, you take it right now.
At least it's going to be at TC Walker.
You need a cognitive test.
I do.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
May I ask one question for my own knowledge? All right. So, so if, if, if you left the Fire Department's location in, that would be calculated into the overall? But if you took the Fire Department's property out, you could do it, you would possibly do it anyway? Would that tell you, would that, would that still give you the information to say, board, this is where we think it should be? You understand what I'm saying? The Fire Department has requested that you remove their property. Could, would it be, could it be, for my own thought process, could it be that if we removed it, that the, that the company would then look and say, yet and still? Let's just use White Marsh, for example. They come back and say, uh, Board of Supervisors, we feel like, based on the information we have, that it's pertinent that you put a station here.
If, and I haven't looked at the RFP in a couple months, but based on your question, I would say that they would not. They would say that a fire station is needed there. What the request was, Ms. Cronin, can I have that, that you asked me if I needed anymore? Yes? It was sent a long time ago.
Thank you, Ms. Cronin.
If I can, Mr. Chair, I, I think I understood, uh, what Mr. Nikosia was asking, and my, my thought is that the consultant would assume that the new Fire Department would be built.
Built.
So they would put into their formula the figures of what it would take to build that out. They would also be meeting with Gloucester Fire and Rescue about the different, uh, equipment that would be needed for the new facility versus evaluating the current one, you know, needs a new HVAC or whatever. They would put that into the budget. They would then look and see, they would be judging this again on response times and things, and so if looking at, and they would consider response times of volunteers to the station as well as when the stations are staffed. But it, it may be that with including it as if it was going to be there, that they may, you know, I'm, I'm just hypothetical, they may say, well, you need that place at White Marsh because these folks cannot get here in time, so, but maybe you only need a two-bay versus a five-bay, or something like that. It, it, it would have to factor into their report of their results, one way or the other, even if it's left out, we would be saying to them, there are plans currently, or there are hopes to, to build it, and that would have to go into the overall equation.
Just, go ahead, Dr. Orf.
Yeah. You know, as we discuss, you know, all these different, uh, components, you know, let's not forget that, you know, what we're dealing with is, is an aspect of this community that affects every single citizen of this community, no matter where they live. And I think what we want to do, what is best for all the citizens. You know, there are some controversies here, and it's, it's tough to hear some of the discussions that have developed, but I think that what I, what I believe that what we want to do is going to be in the best interest of all the citizens now, and for those that come. We want to make sure that the service that we provide, that we can answer calls in the shortest time period possible that can save lives. And if it means, you know, looking at the future and where new facilities have to go so that we can meet those needs and keep that response time to the bare minimum, then so be it. You know, and again, you know, we always have issues that deal with one segment of the community, and this segment, everyone in this community is going to have, you know, an important component of it.
Because Task 3, which they requested to be left out, was evaluation of Fire and Rescue existing sites for current and future needs. Deliverables will include recommendations for expansion improvements to existing sites and relocation to meet growing needs if necessary. Station One is to be replaced. Specific to it, the consultant is to evaluate keeping the site at the present location by expanding to the adjacent property, moving Station One to proposed site on Main Street, those two options. Or review a potential, review potential other locations to handle the geographic region and demand of Station One. Appropriate locations should be developable vacant, adequately sized lots that provide faster response times and/or other benefits not available at the other two locations. If no property meets these criteria, the cult, the consultant should recognize that in the study report. That's what they had asked to be pulled out. So, that being said, um, August 6th, we will, um, when we meet, we will have that up on one of the agenda items. Okay, next items, county attorney items.
Nothing, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
The last two meetings that I've been in attendance with you, the Planning Commission and now the Board of Supervisors have been said to be doing things not following the Constitution, so I'm going to ask you, Mr. Wilmot, have we, the Board of Supervisors, done anything in your eyes that would be deemed unconstitutional?
Most certainly not.
Thank you, sir.
Having booked constitutional law in, in law school, book, the book award is the highest grade in the class. I got it. I, I, I adhere to, I value, I cannot overstate the importance, I cannot overstate the importance of the Constitution. It is, it is our guiding light, it is our guiding document. Constitution does, Constitution does not mention the Planning Commission, nor should it, nor would it. But that government is best, which governs least and is closest to the people. And believe me, the Planning Commission is a heck of a lot closer than Congress.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmot. Boards and commission reports. Supervisor discussion? There is something. And I don't have it. Ms. Cronin, you failed me again. She was supposed to remind me to get an email out. Mr. Wilmot sent, um, a thing out about cameras. Can you mention that, about speed cameras? If we want to, would we like to, as a county, stoplight cameras?
The General Assembly, Mr. Chair, the General Assembly has amended the code to enable localities, including counties, to authorize by ordinance the installation of cameras in areas other than school zones. Historically, they've been limited to school zones, so the county is enabled, but not required, to authorize and require installation of, of speed and traffic monitoring cameras. And I thought it was incumbent upon me to point that out, and what I was thinking about was Woods Crossroads, uh, but it's something I don't think you should act upon tonight, but it's something you might want to consider, is, are there any areas or intersections that you might want to install cameras? I know it's intrusive, but there's a major safety concern.
And if it's something that the board is interested in, I think we need to bring Sheriff Warren in and get his thoughts on it. Dr. Orf, go ahead, let me, okay, let me stop talking, go ahead.
Okay. Actually, I had a constituent ask me about that, and I did talk to Sheriff Warren about that. And we would be limited to a certain number of cameras based on our population, I think it's three. And it would be up to him or us to decide where to go, so it-
Okay, do we want to do it? Do we want to get him involved? That's the question.
We should ask him quickly. Newport News decided to take the cameras out simply because of the fact when, when defendants went to court, they couldn't, they couldn't prove that that driver was the owner of the car. The cameras couldn't prove that, so they just said, the heck with it, let's, this is just tying up our court system, take the cameras out.
Ms. Steele.
I was requested by, um, the judge to come to a meeting on the school bus cameras, and I, I'm not sure exactly what's going to happen, but I know that we've received complaints on the notices that went out, similar to what Mr. Bisani just said, so I was kind of waiting to see, I'm going into the meeting, I said, I'll contact the county attorney if needed, or I'll contact purchasing director if needed, because if it had to do with the contract. But I'm, I, I would really like to hear what she has to say. And then, um, it was Judge Revere, and, um, also, I would say that there's been a lot of talk in the localities with who's collecting lots of money and who's not, so there's some that are very pro and some that are very against, it's kind of all over the board, I think.
One of the, and I, I certainly advocate deferring until after the meeting with Judge Revere, and, and going over problems, issues associated with the, um, the, the stop school bus cameras, absolutely, I think you should look at those first. But one of the requirements of installing these cameras is sign notifications that this area is monitored. And, and it's a factor that may encourage some who might otherwise push the pedal to the metal to not do so. So just, I think we should think about it.
So, go ahead.
Mr. Bisani.
No, no, Mr. Crisco. Is there a way, because it's state code, and for six of the seven of us, could you, I mean, I would like to see more information. Could, could, is it something you can send us and translate for the six of the seven of us that aren't lawyers, that don't read state code, and it, it makes sense to us like we're reading our text on our screen here? I would like more information, and of course, wait for Ms. Steele to get done with her meeting, but I would like to see more information before-
And include Sheriff Warren.
And include Sheriff Warren.
Yes, sir, and I'm sorry that I had not done that. I think Mr. Hudson had asked about it, or I had, actually, I had brought it up at an agenda destruction meeting, uh, at one point, to Ms. Steele and, and Mr. Hudson, and he asked for the information, so I only sent it to him, but I'm happy to send it to all y'all.
So, Mr. Chair, I was curious, you brought up the school board, I mean, the school board, the school bus cameras, and you know, it was purported to us when we voted on it that these cameras would pay for themselves based on the number of convictions we would get. Do we have any empirical data that shows that this, this system has paid for itself?
We had requested, um, a report from transportation, and I cannot remember what that information was, but it's not, it's financially, it's fine, as far as, it's not costing-
Can we get a copy of that result, that study?
Yes, and, and, and as soon as, I, I believe my meeting is this week.
Thank you.
So as soon as I have that meeting, I'll, I'll let you all know.
Anything else for supervisor discussion? Sorry about that, Mr. Wilmot, but it, I've been so busy, it just hit my mind, and Ms. Cronin, you know I'm joking with you, it's, I told you I was going to print it and didn't. All right. Mr. Wilmot, would you read us into closed session?
Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors desires to discuss a particular subject in closed meeting during the course of its meeting on July 16, 2024, and whereas the nature of the subject is personnel matters more specifically, the county administrators and county attorneys' evaluations and contracts, such discussion in closed meeting is expressly permitted by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. Now therefore be it resolved, the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby convene in closed meeting for the purposes herein expressed pursuant to the legal authority herein reciting.
Ms. Steele.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bisani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors has completed its discussion in closed meeting and now desires to continue its open meeting, and whereas only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting, and the only subjects heard, discussed, or considered in said closed meeting were the matters identified in the resolution by which it was convened, now therefore be it resolved, the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby reconvene an open meeting at its meeting of July 16, 2024, and certifies the matters set forth in Virginia Code Section 2.2-37- set forth in Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712D.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes. Only one other item? All in favor? See you next month.